Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the July 17th meeting of the Dover Area School Board. If you'd please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mrs. Benko, could we have the roll call, please?
Mrs. Britton. Mr. Cook.
Here.
Mr. DeSho.
Here.
Mr. Delauter.
Here.
Mr. Eifert.
Here.
Mr. Emmig.
Here.
Mrs. Herman.
Here.
Mrs. Maylie.
Here.
Mr. Rahauer.
Here.
Eight members are present.
Okay. We will begin with our presentations and celebrations tonight. First up, we have the Eagles Nest Plans with Riley Runk.
This is Riley Runk, and she is a junior?
Senior.
Senior at, I'm sorry, senior at Dover High School, and would like to do a project at the stadium to create a student area in the stadium called the Eagles Nest.
As he said, I'm Riley Runk, and I'm a senior. I'm seeking approval tonight for a project that I would like to propose. I would like to create a designated place for, to be used for students to go and support all events done in the stadium. As a student athlete, I know how important and impactful it is to have your peers come out and support you for your games and events, and I believe by doing this, it will unify both the student body and all sports teams by giving everyone a place to be, therefore giving everyone a chance to be part of something, as well as giving a reason to go and support. This will show off our pride in who we are and where we are. I plan on having student volunteers and organizations come in and help paint this, the Eagles Nest. I've talked to Mr. Leatherie, Mr. Wassler, Mr. Nelson, and Mr. Silver about this project. Mr. Silver, although he was unable to make it tonight, has agreed to represent me and supervise the labor. I appreciate you taking the time to listen and consider my presentation tonight, and I look forward to hearing your decisions. And please let me know if I, if you have any questions.
Anybody have any questions?
How many parts of the bleachers are these gonna take?
I-
What is shown there?
Yeah, there is, I plan to paint eight sections of it because of, as of right now, that is, that gives two sections for each grade, and there are people that sit behind the student section, and I didn't feel that we should kick them out. I feel like they should have a spot to sit, too.
You should charge them extra admission to sit in that section.
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you already have a group of volunteers, of other students who are interested?
I was planning on asking either, getting volunteers from our class, getting some of my friends I could. Mr. Silver, I'm in National Honor Society as well, and Mr. Silver said that we would maybe be able to use this as an hour, like, for our hours of project to do this, so we could either have organizations come in and do it, or I could ask some volunteers to do it.
Riley, on the picture that we had received, it said something about the class of 2019. Is the 2019 sponsoring this, or is this a personal free, from you?
That was, I originally would like to, would have liked to have our class donate it, however, if, that was just kind of there. If NHS does it, then we can put something about them doing it. I don't really, I have not figured out where the funds exactly are coming from, but I'm looking into some businesses giving us donations and stuff like that, if that's allowed, and maybe using our class money that we have to do that. So it just depends on who does it that, we'll put that there.
Do you have any comments from Mr. Nelson, or Mr. Wassler, or Mr. Leatherie about this at all, and your thoughts and feelings on moving forward?
I will, I will just say, from the perspective of the school-
Can you go to the microphone, please?
I can't.
Thank you.
I yell loud. This looks good, doesn't it? So, I'm just, in the past year and a half or so, we spent a lot of time on school culture, particularly getting more students to come out to events. Football games are one thing, because they're football Friday nights, and we know how much you guys have worked hard to help us get students into the student section and not other places in the stadium. But when we look at a lot of our other events, Mr. Leatherie and I, we're trying very hard to encourage our students to be there, and I will say, schools that have an identity for their student section tend to see a much greater value from their students in being a part of that student section than ones that just have a set of bleachers that just sit there. What Riley's presenting to you here is something that a lot of schools have done to brand themselves. It also creates a place where the students have an identity. It also allows us to organize better, so from my perspective, as we're building culture, this is an awesome way to move that forward with our athletics program.
Are you going to put something on the webpage, leaving people know that we're gonna have this?
I was not planning, I don't have anything set in stone yet. I didn't want to do anything without getting it approved first, so we can eventually do that then, when we get farther ahead in the process.
I'm sure Mr. Perkins wouldn't have a problem doing that.
I think it's a great project. It'll spruce up the area and give the kids a definite spot that they know they're to be at, so.
Is this something that takes a, an official approval, then? Do we need to add it to our agenda tonight, or do we do it now, or how, how would we do that?
I think we should just go ahead and make it a formal vote, you know, on behalf of the board at this point. So, right now, I'd like to entertain a motion to move forward with the approval to allow the class, and Riley Runk, to move forward with Eagles Nest plans for the high school stadium.
One second.
Any questions or discussion? Okay. We will do a voice vote on this, because we do not have this in the computer. So, all in favor, yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Next up, we have our Live Elementary Courtyard PTO Boy Scout Project.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Troy Weisling, principal at Live Elementary School, 2925 Oakland Road, Dover. I just wanted to take the opportunity to give the board an awareness. Most of you know that we do have a courtyard in our facility. It's in the center, and it's surrounded by hallways and our gymnasium hallway. It's been in existence ever since Live was renovated back in 1998, and it started out as a teacher graduate pro, a group of teachers graduate program project. And so, it has seen different levels of involvement of maintenance and care throughout the years, and it's almost like whoever has time, whoever has the interest, kind of thing. We'd really like to, and over the years since then, we've really, I've really tried to partner with our PTO and with Mr. Nelson and our grounds and maintenance department to come up with some more structure on who's taking care of what. It's really become an amazing space to be used by our students for various activities, ranging from science projects, used as social spaces for parties and celebrations, just going out and doing, being in nature, to have reading, and just, just a great space. But, like anything, in our, even in our own personal lives, it needs maintenance. So, we've had different projects be taken on by, again, like I said, staff members, teachers, custodians, and the PTO. PTO's starting, has been taking a very active role financing some of the projects. So, at this time, we've had some parts of the courtyard go unattended, just because of change in personnel and time and demand and just deterioration. So, at this time, Mary Kim Marzani, our PTO president, is very involved in the community, and she is proposing to partner with Boy Scout Troop 94 in Shiloh, sponsored by, at the Shiloh Fire Department. And actually, don't mean to put him on the spot, Bobby Rep, a former Live student and sitting back here, is a member of that troop. He's here for a different reason. He is working on another badge and, in a communication perspective, and needs to attend here to get a perspective of what a formal school board meeting looks like. So, let's not disappoint him this evening, ladies and gentlemen. But, he at some point probably will be involved with the physical part of this courtyard. So, we've just highlighted, Ms. Marzani and I went through, and there are three particular projects that would need some immediate attention. And what you're seeing there is, several years ago, one of our Live students tragically was killed in a car accident. So, at that time, the PTO purchased that beautiful evergreen as a small evergreen. It has since grown tremendously. There is a plaque that the PTO purchased in honor of that student, and it's placed underneath there. A simple project, what we'd like to do is just do some edging, cut it out a little bit, do some mulching, tan bark underneath, just to highlight it, just clean that up. If you go to the next one, then, please, Mrs. Benko. Thank you. A few years ago, probably as recently as two years, the PTO funded the addition of this beautiful pond. That was also a project that a local scout troop took care of that. It has fish in it, it has some of the ornamental plants. That's flourishing, however, we just need to do some, some maintenance and do some better shrubbery and landscaping work around that. So, that's just another, that will really enhance the beauty of that. So, that's another project that scouts want to take care of, and then, Mrs. Benko, if you go one more. This is an area where some raised flower beds have been put, and it gets used haphazardly throughout different years. Again, we have some seedings, seedlings that get put in there, and sometimes some of the classes go out and do some planting. Those particular pieces of timber are starting to rot, and it's, they're becoming an eyesore, so we're proposing just the removal of those, do a little grading, and then do some planting of grass to actually make it more space. My thoughts, and we have another area where I think maybe out of the normal traffic flow, where I think I would like to see some vegetation or an opportunity for our students to do some planting and, and things like that. But where that is, we would really gain a lot of square footage of area that we could use that a lot more efficiently. So, those are three projects that we'd like to partner with that local scout troop and have them come in, and they would earn some time for service projects for them, and it would be win-win for both of us.
Are you seeking an official approval, too, tonight, Dr. Weisling?
If that's required, yes. We would like that sooner than later, so we can take advantage of the summertime.
We'll make this one official, too. So, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the courtyard PTO project at Live Elementary.
Second.
Any other questions or discussion? All in favor-
Can I just ask a quick question? Funding, for, if you're gonna do some mulching, and you talked about mulching around the tree and that type of-
PTO. The PTO will fund that, yes.
PTO will fund it all?
Yes.
Okay.
Anybody else? Okay, all in favor, yes?
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, we have our first public comment period. This is a period of discussion for items on or off of the agenda. If you have anything you would like to state, please come to the microphones and state your name and address for the record. Again, this will be a three-minute period. Seeing nobody moving, we'll move on to the next part of public comment. This is normally where the township provides us with an update. I don't see Mr. Stefanovic here tonight. Is there anybody else from the township here for an update? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on to board president's communication. I have just one thing to announce, and that is that we did have an executive session prior to tonight's meeting to address legal and personnel matters that are on tonight's agenda. So, with that, we will move on to the approval of the minutes, and at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the June 19th, 2018 board meeting.
Show move.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, Mrs. Benko. Next, we'll move on to our consent agenda for the evening. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve all items listed under the consent agenda.
Show moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. I will go down through the various items and see if there are any questions or discussion. Are there any items under the personnel items that would require questions or discussion? I believe we have our new assistant principal, if the vote goes well tonight, with us tonight, if you wanted to introduce her.
Yes. Smida Weakland, this is the board. This is Smida Weakland. She is our, we are hoping to get her approved tonight as our new assistant high school principal.
I would just like to say thank you for this opportunity.
If you could, I'm sorry I moved to the-
So, your aunt's, you're on the, you're taped.
Can you guys hear me? I think I have a louder enough voice. Am I heard? I'm just gonna say thank you so much for this opportunity. I am really, really looking forward to serve this community, and thank you. Just looking forward to this. I'm excited. Thanks.
Great. Okay. Any questions related to the contracts that are listed, the medical agreements, anything with that?
I just have one question, and I don't know if Jen or, can answer this. On the bills paid, I noticed for the gas service to the different buildings, I don't know if it's just slipped, has slipped past me in the last several months, but I noticed the high school usage was way above the rest of the school buildings. Just, is that a normal amount that we're, I mean, it seemed like at some, even at the intermediate school, it was double the cost of the intermediate school. So, that's just a normal usage every month, and I've just missed out over the last several months. Okay.
I did want to make a comment on the item 716, the donations. We do have a donation being made to the district to be applied to negative lunch accounts at Live Elementary, so I'd certainly like to thank that individual for making that contribution to the district.
Anybody else have questions?
Just got to comment that I do believe we have other, other new hires that are on our agenda tonight that are in our presence. Is that correct?
One other, Rachel Recker. She will be at the intermediate school as our transition classroom teacher.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Any other questions? Okay, there is one more item listed at the very end of the consent agenda, and that has to do with the insurance settlement. And at this time, I'd just like to announce that the board of directors is acting on this agreement pursuant to the policies of our insurance company. The board of directors has no further comment in regards to this matter. So, with that, we have a motion and a second. Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, Mrs. Benko. Okay, moving on to human and fiscal resources, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the resignations listed on tonight's agenda.
Show move.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or discussion?
I would be abstaining from this vote due to a family member being involved in one of the, as one of the positions.
Thank you, Mr. Cook. Anybody else? Hearing none, Mrs. Benko. Okay, next up, Dover Eagle Foundation. Mrs. Krim.
Just for tonight, I'd like to report that Mrs. Benko and Mr. Perkins and I met with the current leadership, and we are currently making plans to move the Dover Eagle, Eagle Foundation forward. So, we will have more specific details for you next month, but we are very excited, and we do believe that there is a bright future for the Dover Eagle Foundation, so more details to follow.
Thank you. Questions for Mrs. Krim? Okay, Mr. Emmig, York Adams Academy.
No meeting this month. We will resume again next month.
Okay. York County School of Technology, Mr. Delauter.
Yes, I have two things. First, at our June Joint Operating Committee meeting, the board voted to eliminate the adult ed GED program at the school. There was a lot of concern from several members of the audience about that, and it basically came down to that program was being run through grants from the state, and the grant process changed, and instead of paying whatever you put in for your grant, they changed it to actually of how many seats are, are being utilized. And the problem with that is, we were, as a school, expecting, I think it was like 100 seats, but we were averaging 50 seats on, on the program, but we were hiring teachers enough to handle that 100. So, it was a losing program for the, for the, the school, and part of the conversation was that the school really wants to get back to their core mission of providing a technical education for students, and the, the adult ed programs are always as part of a, as long as it breaks even or makes some money, I think we would do that. So, again, we'll decide to take care of that. There are several other opportunities in the county to get your GEDs, so this does not leave anybody without an opportunity to get that, if they want to do that. So, just, if you hear anything about that, that's what happened there. Second thing, the authority board met last week concerning the building project out there, and as I had mentioned at earlier meetings with us, that I had some concerns with the way this, this project was progressing. They went back, after they, they met with us, they met, went back and met with the architect, and really, what our chairman called a come-to-Jesus meeting with the architect, really talked to them about how our monetary goal was to get this in at about $9 million. So, they went back to the drawing board, looked a couple of things, and with the purchase of the additional property next door, it was decided at the authority board that we're gonna step back for a minute, we're gonna reevaluate where exactly we're gonna put this, this, this building. So, we're kinda going back to the drawing board here with this, taking our time and redesigning this building, and we're hoping that, number one, it's gonna be a better building, a better utilized building, better location at a cheaper cost. So, that's, that's the whole, the whole goal of our, of our, the authority board, is to make sure that we're gonna get a building that's needed, it's gonna be usable, not just for sporting events, but for academics and supporting their programs as well. So, as I get more information on that, as we continue back down that road again, I'll update you on that.
Can I ask a question on that?
Yeah.
So, how do additional architectural fees come into play, then? Because I, you know, I've, I've seen how architectural fees, you know-
Right. We did, one of the, the two things that they did, that we did agree upon was, can't remember what the term they used, but basically, you know, the architect, the architects had already had some costs involved with the original project, as well as the civil engineers with doing the initial site survey. So, we did agree to recoup those costs to them as damages, I guess you would call that, for, for their services rendered. But, again, the architect gave us another presentation on what their thought process are moving forward, and they believe that even with that, that upfront mind that we're paying for damages, for costs incurred, that we can still come in at our budget that we originally projected, with, again, because we're, we're hopefully moving this building to a different part of the, of the campus.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or discussions? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to LIU Special Education with Mr. DeSho.
I have nothing at this time.
Mr. Rahauer, Legislative.
Well, it seems that we have an election coming up this year, and Mr. Wolf says that, you know, they passed a budget, they passed school funding, but he hasn't still decided finally how the funding should be divided, and Mr. Wagner has another opinion about how funding should be divided. His feeling is that schools that are losing, I guess, population shouldn't be as funded as much as they are, and that's the battle that's going on right now, and I guess we'll, time will tell. I guess all depends who wins in November.
York Learning Center, Mr. Rahauer.
What?
York Learning Center.
Nothing. We meet next month.
Any other questions for Mr. Rahauer tonight? Okay, Mrs. Britton is not with us for PSBA. Did you have anything on that, Mrs. Benko, from Mrs. Britton, or anything? Okay. Dover Industrial Development Committee, Mrs. Herman.
Okay, they're still working on possibly either forming a chamber of commerce, or they're talking more now about a Dover businessman, Business Association, and they're trying, they want every member of the committee to go out and go to some of the businesses, which will all take so many, and talk about the plan and what they would like to do as far as this association, invite them to a breakfast, and then maybe just go from there. And then, we found out about some more businesses coming to the area. Of course, you've seen Dunkin' Donuts is on its way, and there's also a restaurant coming, and there's gonna be a small shopping center where they took down the two homes in the barn at the corner of Hilton. Yeah, Hilton. They're also talking about a business that's going to go in, out, out on Hilton, out at the corner of Bull Road in Hilton, where there's a big cornfield right now, and that's kind of exciting for us. Mr. Britton's going to address it, how we can use it as a, as a school district.
Yeah, the business, there's a business that's looking at that property at the corner of Bull and Hilton that would use, I believe, 150 of the acres. There's more than that that's there, but it's a hydroponic, a commercial hydroponic, and they're, the business owners are gonna be getting in contact with me to see how our horticulture program can help them if they choose to move into that vicinity. The York Economic Alliance is setting up that connection for us to start the communications process with that. So, they've been, just released the name. It's all in process right now. They're not sure if it's actually gonna go through, but they would like to sit and talk with the school district, since we do have an approved program in horticulture. So, it'll be a lot of greenhouses going up, and it's all hydroponically run. Okay?
Thank you.
And that's everything.
Questions for Mrs. Herman? Okay, superintendent's report, Mrs. Krim.
Well, believe it or not, we are one month away from opening day, so I would like to invite the entire board. Please mark your calendars for August 16th, beginning at 7:30 at the high school cafeteria for refreshments. We have an opening day activity for all new teachers and all teachers, staff, the entire staff, custodians, par, professionals, everybody, and it concludes about 11:30 when everyone then goes onto their own building. So, again, mark your calendars for that. I'd like to share that our reading specialist donated their time on July 9th to go to Lair and Brookside Park to hand out books and organize activities and do a read aloud for approximately 155 students who attend camp in those parks. So, again, I wanted to do a shout-out, because they did donate their time for that, and that's very exciting. Next month, you will have coming before you, revised staff, student, and athletic handbooks. The principals and Mr. Leatherie have worked very hard to update all handbooks, make sure policies are aligned, and make sure procedures are in place, and we are currently sending them off, as we get them, to Mr. Pratt's to take a look at, and what we will do is, we will get them board-approved, and we will revise them as needed, and we will keep working on them till they are clean and exactly what we want them to be. I think it's been a while since they've all been approved, so we want to get that done. Also, next month, you are going to be receiving your first round of curriculum for approval. You will be receiving K-28 ELA, K-6 ELA, and seventh and eighth grade math curriculum. The curriculum committee was provided with some information as to how the format would look. We're going to make that available to you ahead of time, so that you can take a look at it, and because this is our first time with this board doing this, and with Dr. Maloney doing this, any questions you have, please send to us. So, we give you what you need, and you have the information you need, so we can get that approved, because she has a very, very strict schedule at writing curriculum this year. Am I correct?
Yes.
Yes, very strict. So, we're going to get this ball rolling, so we want to get you ready, and- So, we're going to get this ball rolling, so we want to get you ready, and this is a great opportunity to ask all the questions that you might have about how we're moving forward with curriculum. And then, just finally, I wanted to share that I will be out of the district Thursday and Monday, I'll be back next Tuesday. My son gets married on Saturday in Columbus, Ohio, and those of you have heard about this from last year. My goodness, it's almost over. But, Dr. Maloney is in the district, and so is Mrs. Benko, so anything you need, I will probably have limited email at that time. And that's all I have.
Questions for Mrs. Krim? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to our miscellaneous period for any other comments or observations from our board members tonight. Hearing none, we'll move on to our last public comment period. This is a two-minute period for items on or off of the agenda, so if you have anything you would like to comment on, please come to the microphones and state your name and address for the record. Okay, seeing none. We do have our future meetings for your calendars. Our next Board Action Meeting will be Tuesday, August 14th, at 7 o'clock PM. Our Board Committee Meetings will resume August 16th, that's a Thursday, at 6:00 PM, and our Board Planning Meeting will be August 16th at 7:00 PM. The board will be going into an executive session immediately following this meeting tonight. So, with that, I would like to entertain a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting. We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, yes?
Yes.
We are adjourned, thank you.